All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order of the DeKalb City Council. A regular meeting, January twenty fourth, twenty, what? Oh, twenty twenty-two. Roll call, please.
Morris.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic. Favor. Mayor Barnes.
Here.
Six present.
Thank you, Ruth. Alderman Favor and Alderman Verbic also with advance notice let us know that they wouldn't be able to be here. So I appreciate them always letting us know. Yes, Alderman Perkins.
Mayor, do you know if the clerk will be joining us this evening?
The clerk will not be joining us this evening. He emailed me a couple hours ago that he's having a problem with his laptop and needs to get it repaired. So he won't be coming tonight to the city council meeting. And moving on. Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. How about we'll have Alderman McAdams lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the states and the republic, for which its standing is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I did have an announcement to make. It looks like there's a problem with Comcast, so we are not able to stream this meeting via our normal Comcast Channel fourteen. My understanding is our tech gurus, Jeff back there, is rapidly trying to switch over to Metronet. And I know we have notified Comcast, and Comcast is actively dispatching service personnel in order to address that issue. So I apologize to all those that I know can't hear me right now out in Cyberland, but at least we've got it for the record that we are doing everything we can to address that. All right, moving on to agenda item C, Approval of the Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, did you move?
Morris.
Oh, Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions, changes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Wonderful. All right, moving on to agenda item D, Presentations. We have none. Moving on to agenda item E, Public Participation. Ruth, did we have any forms? No? Okay. Moving on to agenda item F, Appointments. Number one, Appointment of the Finance Director, Carrie Ditman, to the Foreign Fire Service, Foreign Fire Insurance Tax Board, the Fire Pension Board, and the Police Pension Board. And then number two, Appointment of Acting Fire Chief Mike Thomas and City Manager Bill Nicholas as management representatives to the Ground Emergency Medical Transportation, GEMT, Committee as per Section six point one G of the City and IAFF Local twelve thirty-six Collective Bargaining Agreement. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Comments, questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Excellent, so the appointments are approved. All right, moving on to agenda item G, Approval of the Minutes. Number one, Minutes submitted by the City Clerk. My understanding is we have none still? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so we'll just move on to number two. Minutes submitted by the Recording Secretary, Ruth Scott. Number A, Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of January tenth, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
All right, the minutes pass. Appreciate that, Ruth. All right, then moving to agenda item H, Consent Agenda. Number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two in the amount of two million four hundred and four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-nine cents. Number two, Investment and Bank Balance Summary through November twenty twenty-one. Number three, Year-to-Date Revenues and Expenditures through November twenty twenty-one. Number four, Freedom of Information FOIA Report, December twenty twenty-one. And number five, FY twenty twenty-one Human Services Funding Report, Fourth Quarter. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, Alderwoman Larson, and seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Am I just like way caffeinated? I feel like I'm moving really fast. Sorry about that. All right, hang on, let me bring up my notes. All right. All right, so now we're moving on to agenda item I, Public Hearings. I'm gonna open the public hearing at six oh five. And it's a public hearing regarding the proposed annexation of a point six eight acre property located along the north side of Barbara Green Road, approximately one hundred and eighty feet west of County Farm Road, commonly known as twenty-six sixteen Barbara Green Road, Arista Residences. First, I had asked from the audience if there's anyone that wanted to speak up on this particular topic. You can come to the podium right now. All right, hearing none. City Manager Nicholas.
Just say we have two ordinances on your agenda tonight that will deal with this. One is the actual act of annexation, and the other one is a rezoning request that is also looking for action. Public hearing is part of a state statutory requirement when there's an annexation. In this case, we're talking about a one point eight acre parcel. And of that one point eight acres, point six eight acres is currently not within the incorporated limits of the City of DeKalb. That's why this is up for public hearing, and we can address details later on in the action items.
Counsel? All right, we'll be talking about it a little bit later. If no discussion with counsel? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at six oh seven PM. All right, considerations. We have none. Agenda item K, Resolutions. Number one, Resolution two zero two-two dash zero one-two, authorizing the waiver of competitive bidding and approving the purchase of water meters and radio transmitters from Badger Meter Incorporated and Core and Main in an amount not to exceed eighty thousand dollars. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We've been aiming at the threshold of eighty thousand dollars for the last couple of years, or approximately that amount. And as the background suggests, and as a deeper background from Brian Favor also explains, this is money for the purchases of new water meters and some reading devices. These are important for the process of calculating the usage of water and also what may be a fair rate for the payment of fees for the ability to access our water system. So we have, every year, we don't go out and find new meters because we have a backlog of certain meters already in place. We have, over the years, always taken account of the quality of the reads that we're getting, the happiness of the people who have them in their homes. And we've, over a lot of years, landed on this particular brand, Badger Water Meters. And then there's another type of meter that is the census brand, which is made by a local distributor, Core and Main, for the larger meters, the ones that are more commercial and industrial. So this is a package. If every year we turned them out, there are literally thousands that we'd have to think about turning out because we have reading devices that read the ones that we're replacing. So it's one of those situations where we do review them every year, and we did turn out a different system some years back, was something we monitor. In this case, we're asking that you waive the competitive bidding in this case because we're very happy with the results, and we're not getting complaints from our users. Eighty thousand is the price for this year's keeping up to speed with routine replacement of older meters.
Counsel, any questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
All right, resolution passes. Moving on to agenda item two, Resolution two zero two-two dash zero one-three, authorizing the purchase and equipping of one police interceptor vehicle through Morrow Brothers Ford for the DeKalb Police Department in an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-five. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Well, this is not something that Chief Bird and I were looking forward to bringing before you, but basically we had an engine blow up in one of our older squads. We had hoped to get another year out of it. As you can see, it was reaching kind of the end of its expected life, but we're not gonna be able to do that. The coolant system failed. When it was taken apart, we found that the oil and coolant were mixing throughout the engine. And once we fixed that for about seventy-five hundred dollars, thereabouts, there would be additional work on the coolant system. So looking at a couple thousand dollars more. The value of the used vehicle at this point would be far less than that. So we're gonna have to replace it. It's a front-line, fully marked and fully equipped squad car. We have some money in our capital fund to do that. We have the ability to buy from the state contract, which would be the lowest competitive price we can find in the state of Illinois. There are dealers in the northern Illinois area that do commit to those prices, even though they're much lower than they might get at regular retail. Morrow Brothers Ford is one of those in Greenfield, Illinois. They will, we're looking to replace the vehicle with a, the two thousand seventeen vehicle with a two thousand twenty-one. As you know from just hearing the news, there's concurrent arrival right now of twenty-ones and twenty-twos on lots that have been starving for new vehicles. And if we get it, if a twenty-two comes in, Morrow Brothers will honor the twenty-one price. It's a pretty good deal, so we recommend your support of this.
Counsel, questions or comments? If anyone wonders why there's not a lot of dialogue up here, if you go online and look at the city agenda, you will be amazed at the background information that we all receive that is incredibly detailed. So it's a, it gives us the ability to become very educated on topics ahead of time. But then also, the city manager, and I would say all city staff, are incredibly responsive, and we reach out on the regular just with various questions in order to become as informed as possible before this council meeting. And I want to commend the city manager and staff for being able to provide such an amazing agenda. So once again, you can go online and you can see all the background material that we see with each city agenda. All right, hearing no comments or questions, roll call, please.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Resolution two zero two-two dash zero one-three passes. All right, moving on to agenda item L, Ordinance's Second Reading. We have none. So moving on to agenda item M, Ordinance's First Reading. Number one, Ordinance two zero two-one dash zero zero five, Amending Chapter thirty-eight, Intoxicating Liquors, Section thirty-eight point oh nine, Restrictions Generally Applicable as It Pertains to the Delivery of Liquor. Can I have a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager.
It seems like we've been living with COVID for several years, and we have. And in the first wave, our first exposure to this new plague, the state of Illinois and municipalities like ours, we're wrestling with how can we keep businesses, particularly bars and restaurants, open and operating? Or at least, if they can't be open and operating, how can we help them kind of eke out enough of a living to stay in business? And one of the things that the state, what's the bureau at the state level for the liquor, the?
The liquor commissioner.
Liquor Commissioner, Liquor Control Board. And we, at the municipal level, all agreed on was that we ought to find some provisions with state blessing for the home delivery of alcohol. And so we, liquor commissioner at the state level, and we at the local level with our home rule authority, agreed that there ought to be some home delivery of alcohol, and that was accomplished and continues today. The state legislature decided to make that a permanent rather than a temporary rule or guide. And so two things were done that we're trying to do tonight. The first one is what I've just described, is to incorporate in our liquor code the new state law provisions allowing the home delivery of alcohol. And even though that preempts home rule, we would like you to approve that. The second piece of this does not preempt home rule, but again, it's something that, it's a practice that we have abided, approved. Liquor Commissioner and the council agreed to back in two thousand twenty. And that was the delivery and carryout of mixed drinks, provided that they're properly sealed. And examples of this might be growlers from a pub or margaritas from a restaurant. And these have to be sealed. There has to be some way so that an adult, police officer, anybody can know that this was sealed at the source and can't be reopened until it's delivered. So we're asking that you incorporate both of these provisions now permanently within our liquor code, which is something that we hadn't done, and your approval is, would be appreciated.
Any questions, Counsel? Alderman Smith.
Bill, does this automatically, or Matt, does this automatically drop off, or do we have to reamend the code in twenty twenty-four?
So the liquor delivery by a third party part does not drop off, but the to-go, the state legislation drops off in twenty twenty-four, January third, I think, of twenty twenty-four, unless it's, you know, unless the state passes subsequent legislation to extend that. Our amendment mimics that state legislation, so it would expire, I think, on its terms, January twenty twenty-four, unless we took further action.
Thank you.
Which we could within our home rule.
Yeah, even if the state chose not to extend it, we could choose to.
And I don't, I don't think we've had any issues with it. I mean, I think it's worked out very, very well.
We had some anxiety about it. It worked out really well. I don't believe we've had any issues with it.
No, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance two zero two-one dash zero zero five passes. All right, moving on to number two, Ordinance two zero two-two dash zero zero six, authorizing a reimbursement in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents to Northern Illinois University for the overpayment of twenty twenty-one in annual contributions for integrated transit services. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In October two thousand eighteen, as the background explains, the city and NIU entered an intergovernmental agreement, and that IGA addressed a number of things. And one of those was what would be a cost-sharing understanding between the two parties. And according to that understanding, NIU was to contribute forty percent, and here's the optimal phrase, of the total cost for the combined fixed route and paratransit services in DeKalb. And it was agreed that we would track this every year, and a certain amount was usually put into our budget, but then there would be a recalc at the end of the year just to make sure that the costs were what we expected them to be. In two thousand twenty-one, we expected that the costs would be higher. They were not. And so NIU has an effect, an overpayment of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventeen cents. So what this particular ordinance does is to reimburse them per the IGA in that amount. Recommend your approval.
Alderman Smith?
I'll just throw it out there. This is grant money passed through, correct? So it's really, it's just a housekeeping for us. It's really no.
Yeah, we, you know, our share comes really from the federal government. So it's not like we're dipping into our, well, we are dipping into our budget in the sense that our transportation fund holds these monies, but local taxpayers are not contributing to this.
That's where I was going. Thank you.
And there's always fixed costs associated with every organization. So the scaling up and down like this, are we unduly burdened because of the fixed costs, or was this a? Go ahead. You know where I'm going.
Well, the, so the fixed costs have to do with not only the, are you talking about fixed rate or just fixed cost?
Just fixed costs.
Okay, fixed costs are assignable to both the personnel who drive the buses and also the equipment and repair and the replacement and so.
Yeah, or even if we don't have ridership, it's still there, right?
They're there. In this case, though, the actual costs were less because routes were either discontinued or were, you know, the number of recurring in any hour morning or evening were reduced because the ridership was so much reduced. And that was done by the company that we hired, TransDev, to do the operation.
Okay. Any other questions, Counsel? Hearing none. Ordinance, or, roll call, please.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance two zero two-two dash zero zero six passes on first reading. And City Manager, holler if there's something you wanted to pass on second reading, if you want us to waive it.
Actually, I should've said something. We didn't do second reading on the previous ordinance, did we?
No, we could still. Correct?
There's nothing in either case that is, has an abiding public concern at this point.
So you definitely want us to waive second reading for two zero two-two dash zero zero six and zero five?
This one and the previous one, yeah.
All right, first, I'll take a motion to waive second reading on zero zero six.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Roll call, please.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
All right, so second reading has been waived for ordinance two zero two-two dash zero zero six. Now I'll take a motion to waive second reading on ordinance two zero two-one dash zero zero five.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance two zero two-one dash zero zero five, second reading has been waived. All right, sorry about that. I wasn't really thinking about that through, City Manager, and I didn't see any notes. All right, so moving on to number three, Ordinance two zero two-two dash zero zero seven, authorizing the annexation of certain property to the City of DeKalb, located along the north side of Barbara Green Road, approximately one hundred and eighty feet west of County Farm Road, commonly known as twenty-six sixteen Barbara Green Road, Arista Residences. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. There are several petitioners, and some of whom are in the audience tonight, and would be happy also to answer any questions you may have. Herb and Linda Bure are the trustees. The American National Bank Trust, representing this particular property, is also petitioner, and Pappas Development is a petitioner as well. This project has been reviewed by the Plan Commission, Planning and Owning Commission, which I'll get to in a little bit, but it is a parcel that's familiar to many of us, even if we've driven by and maybe haven't studied the layout. The layout's getting a lot more study now, and that's a good thing. The overall site is fairly small, less than just under two acres, one point eight acres. As the public hearing notes had explained, and as the background for this ordinance explains, some of that land area is currently outside the city corporate limits, point six eight acres. So this particular ordinance is one half of the package before you tonight, and that's the annexation. And the, why the annexation? What's going on? Why there's a proposal to build Arista Residences by Pappas Development. It would include sixty-one one-bedroom, fully furnished apartment units with twelve-month leases. The units are fully furnished, about seven hundred square feet. Estimated monthly rent is about thirteen hundred and fifty dollars. The amenities, it's in a hotel-style lobby, hospitality room, business center, full gym, EV charging station, and so forth, as explained in the background. There would be no commercial uses at the lower level. Otherwise, it would be similar in some respects in terms of its users to Isaac Suites. There are three points of access to this particular subject site. There's a right-in and right-out of the Barbara Green Road. There's a full access point to the County Farm Road, which is a city street. There's a third access point to the north and slightly northwest, which is a private lane that is an access road for the Northland Plaza Shopping Center. And the owner of this lot will have the opportunity to enjoy the license that was provided for that third access point back in two thousand and four. There are public services already provided to the subject property. They, the proposal is to enhance those. There's an existing sanitary sewer that runs through the property that would be relocated, and the Kewauckee Water Reclamation District has been supportive of that. Sidewalks would be constructed along Barbara Green Road, the existing walkways, west and east. There'd be landscaping. The stormwater retention would be incorporated in this. There would be parking islands. The parking would meet the UDO requirements for parking, for off-street parking, and so forth. The property, as you know, and I think as the viewers in the audience and I can speak to this if you'd like, the property has been for sale for many years. I believe eighteen years is correct. And it has been at least of casual interest to a number of commercial interests, but there are some things arguing against it. The access from Barbara Green, which would be the common point of entry for people coming from the toll road, going down twenty-three or across Barbara Green, is limited to right-in, right-out because there's a raised median on the Barbara Green thoroughfare. There are some other issues, which are more market issues. There's a building, if, now that you've oriented yourself, I guess I could go, let's go to the, to the, there we are, the subject site. And, just to work. Well, you see where the arrow is going now? There's a building there that I don't know that has ever been occupied. From year to year, we see some self-love equipment there in front of it, but it does, has never supported, since the remodeling of Northland Plaza, a commercial use. And directly to the north of it, there is another, you can see the arrow here. It was once occupied, but it has been either underserved or vacant for the most part since, well, since the housing crisis, basically, back in two thousand eight, two thousand ten. So, and as you know, there's also been a slide in commercial occupancies in the Market Square Development and also in other places around the, around twenty-three quarters. So it's just not welcoming enough in other respects and market preferences right now for commercial interest. And if it had been, then we would have been entertaining that in recent years. So it's a site which is vying for some kind of development. Pappas Development seeks use for it, and they have established a market for their users. And what is that? Well, Mr. Pappas is in the audience tonight, and Foti is in the audience tonight, and John is as well, and can speak to that specifically. But there's a range of users. There's all age groups. There are people who are employed and people who are retired. There are people who are working in professional positions at the hospital, for NIU, at various new developments around town who are looking for residences, maybe just for all week or just part of the week. just part of the week. The rate is $1,350 a month. That's $45 a night. And so if you're a professional looking to come in for five days during the weekend, and you're looking to go home to another place over the weekend, then that's a great, great opportunity. Or if you're people who are here to work for the next two to three years in a big development to the south, that's a great opportunity as well. And so it's hard to argue with the success that the Pappas Development has had in filling Isaac Suites and Cornerstone and Plaza DeKalb, and this seems to be a good opportunity as well. And they've renewed interest and the EAV of properties, every property they've touched. That's the background. The action item is annexation. The annexation only makes sense if you're also going to proceed to the rezoning, so I know you've considered that. So we are recommending the annexation. The Planning and Zoning Commission also considered this, and it comes to you with their recommendation.
And just to clarify too, City Manager, are there any city incentives for this particular project?
No, there are not.
Thank you for clarifying that. Alderwoman Morris?
I just want to say that I think this is an extremely efficient use of the space. I'm thrilled to see this proposal, thrilled to see this piece of land put to new and exciting use that very likely will revitalize the space and bring new energy there and bring new traffic there. I think it's a really positive idea. I have a couple of questions. They do not change my opinion whatsoever of this. So the questions are, because I'm not sure I saw it in the background, but is this furnished or unfurnished?
These would be fully furnished apartments. Hotel suites.
Okay. And I saw 12-month leases, right?
Yes.
Okay.
12, 18, 24. We're getting to the point now where we're seeing, you know, people that want to come in with three-year leases because they're in the retirement category.
Interesting.
So, yeah, it's changing the game completely.
And do you think you need that much parking? I know it's the law.
I know the city wants the parking, so do I need that amount of parking? No. But it's required, so we accommodate it.
Because I think it's 1.5 spaces per.
1.5 per space, you know.
Yeah, per unit.
1, 2, 5 is probably a much more, you know, outnumber, but we could accommodate it, so we'll make it happen.
And I think in that vein, recognizing where we are with the environment and the environmental needs these days, I think it's a lot, I think it's worth considering and assessing whether or not the parking ordinances need to be reduced. And in a similar vein, just my personal opinion, I would encourage you to double your EV charging stations. That's awesome.
Yeah, and it's been big. The first time we did it was at the Isaac, and it's been, it's been a good success there. We do have a handful of residents that are using it, and it's been awesome. It's the first time I've really seen a machine like that. Never owned my own electric vehicle, but clearly recently now, the demand there is huge. And without, if you're going to provide a five-star living experience, you need the electric charging station. End of story.
It can also.
Because the tenant, they pull up in a $90,000 Tesla.
It can also be a draw for people passing through as well. Not that that's what you want in your parking lot, but just saying.
It's, yeah, it works.
City Manager?
Just to the Alderwoman's point, as a matter of fact, we are going to bring you some, a list of things that we should consider in our UDO, and one of those is generally parking requirements around town. We've got, in some cases, a hefty requirement considering the average use.
Yeah, and perhaps we want, perhaps we want to consider that before you take significant action.
That'll be a fun one, reducing the requirement of parking, since that's such a hot topic in our community.
Yeah, I know. I always want to tread lightly when we speak about parking.
I know, I know. I know it's unpopular.
No, but I agree.
I like to say the hard things.
I know DeKalb loves parking, so I.
But it is worthy. It's worthy bringing it up for discussion to see if there is a change that needs to be made, absolutely. And I agree on the charging stations as well, because there could be residents that, you know, if your charging stations, you don't have enough, maybe that deters them from buying an electric vehicle, where if there was capacity and it would be convenient for them, they could do that.
Yeah, and that's the free market putting up the charging stations. We're not waiting for them to come eight years from now. This is the free market, and that's what works.
That's great. Other questions, comments? No? All right, hearing none. Thanks, Foti. I really appreciate you coming up.
Yeah, definitely. Anything else? I'm available.
All right. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-007 passes. I'm looking at you.
The petitioners have requested a waiver, second reading.
Move to waive second reading.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
All right, so ordinance 2022-007 passed on first reading, and then the motion to waive second reading was also passed. All right, moving on to Agenda Item M4, ordinance 2022-008, authorizing a zoning map amendment for the, from the SFR1 Single Family Residential District to the PD-C Planned Development Residential District, and a zoning map amendment from the GC General Commercial District to the PD-R Planned Development Residential District, and approval of a preliminary plan 2616 Barbara Green Road and 1383 Barbara Green Road Arista Residences. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager, tell us what that was.
Thank you, Mayor. So there are two cleanup things, basically, to do with the zoning. So the parcel that was not in the city needs to be zoned. It comes in as the most restricted zoning, which is single-family. The proposal is they have that turned to PDR, Planned Development Residential. And then the existing 1.1 acres within the city is zoned, GC General Commercial. We've talked about how that's just not attracting users, and this use is not commercial, and it should be consistent with the zoning of the newly annexed parcel. So the proposal is to likewise rezone that parcel to PDR District to unify the site under a common zoning, which makes sense, and the Planning and Zoning Commission agreed. Why Planning Development? Why is that interesting or important? Well, that means that all parties, the city and the petitioners, can be more creative in disposition of the built space and the open space and the parking and so forth, and not following the more conventional rigid zoning requirements, so many feet from this, so many feet from that. You can get a better use of each other's land, and also amenities can be spread more creatively. And that's what's proposed in the site plan that was part of your background. So we recommend this. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended it, and we hope we'll support that.
Counsel? Alderman Smith?
Going to what Alderwoman Morris said about reducing parking, if we reduce that, were we to reduce that, would that add to the, would we not have to go through with the UDO to change then? Would that, would we have enough space?
Well, you still have some issues. You mean in terms of the waiver that was discussed here? It could be used to expand, to get to that two-acre, well, not to get to two-acre, but to get to the amount of open space. However, so you write the rules, the council has written the rules, and you have, but while the rules exist, you have to play within the rules. And the rules are 92 spaces and so forth. To change that, we have to bring this back, and we'd probably have to go back to the Plan Commission, say we're going to have less. I think at this point, since the petitioners are, have been prepared to accept that, if there's something in terms of moving things around, great, but 92 is 92.
Well, I'm going to vote for it. I just wanted to see if there was some way we, and this is probably one of the things we need to be revisiting as well.
Yes.
So, that's all.
Thank you.
And that's a great opportunity, I would assume, for anyone coming before us with a proposal in the future, they could get ahead of it and maybe make a request for a reduction in the parking requirement if we haven't addressed it formally and officially going forward. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Ordinance 2022-008 passes. Can I get a motion to waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Comments? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Six I.
Excellent. So ordinance 2022-008 passes. Clarification comment, I think I'd make, I was on the radio show with TD Ryan, and there was just comments about the developments that Mr. Pappas has been putting forward. And John, I made a statement, and you can tell me if I'm at least close enough on this, but if I recall, you grew up here. If I recall, you sent your kids through the public school system. If I recall, at some point in my college years in the 90s, after the bars closed and I went to Tom and Jerry's to get a euro, I think you were the guy that served me that particular euro. And if I recall, you, time and time again, figure out a way to reinvest your money in this community, and you continue to grow the impact that you make. And I think a way to put it would be, you're a local boy who continues to invest in our community. Would I have that relatively accurate?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say it for the public record, that a lot of people don't realize, John grew up here, raised his family here, has his business here, and continues to invest in this community. And I just wanted to personally say thank you for the commitment that you've made to our community and the impact you continue to make.
Appreciate it.
You betcha. All right, moving on to reports and communication, Agenda Item N, Councilmember reports. Alderwoman Morris, you want to kick us off?
Sure. I just want to note that as COVID cases continue to increase in our community and, you know, we're faced with that struggle, I want to encourage people with children ages five to 12 to pursue vaccination for those children. Every day I am getting reports from the school of more and more cases at that level. So I just want to encourage that and highlight that one of the benefits of doing so is that if your child, my understanding is that the policy currently is, that if your child is a close contact of someone with COVID-19, and yet they are fully vaccinated, they are allowed to return to school, fully masked every day and so on. And that is a huge benefit to our children because they get the opportunity to remain in school and not miss valuable learning time, just because they've been in touch with someone who has been sick. And of course, it allows parents to continue working through that time as well. So I just want to encourage you to get your children ages five to 12 vaccinated, and older, of course.
Agree wholeheartedly. How about Alderman Smith?
I guess I'll get on my high horse again. Please move your car where the snowplows are, they're all over the place, especially on our snow routes. The guys are doing a great job, but they could do a better job if we just get the cars out of the way. And please help your neighbors by shoveling your sidewalks. There's, I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that could use some help. You know, there's plenty of places to reach out to if you need help to have your walk shoveled, and that's it.
And shovel your neighbor's sidewalk once in a while, too, you know? That's always fun. And Scott, Zach, I just wanted to make a comment. You've made some posts on the plowing, and the dialogue online has just been great. People have been getting their questions answered and making their comments. And I don't think Andy Rye is here, but as usual, Boy's Crew is doing an amazing job. Probably, probably.
He worked through the night last night.
Yeah, I bet, I bet. And our streets are clear in record time after two big snowfalls. Alderman McAdams?
No report.
All right. Alderwoman Larson?
I'll kind of jump on the snowplow thing. Besides your driveway and everything, help your postal worker out and kind of do along the street so that the snowplows don't have to try to get so close to your mailbox, and you'll still have a mailbox the next day, so do a little extra shoveling.
Alderman Perkins?
Again, kudos to Andy Rye and his group, his guys. The snow came at a rough time and shut down some business elements, but we didn't miss a beat with the city. Good job.
All right, mine, I'll just further reiterate what Alderwoman Morris was saying, but about just getting vaccinated. I mean, at this point, I'm double vaxxed, I'm boosted, and I've had COVID. I can't even imagine not being vaccinated after I had received COVID. If it meant that it could have been worse, I highly encourage everyone out there to get vaccinated. So please, and if you're double vaxxed, then just go ahead and get boosted. It's just a nice way for all of us to do our part to make sure that we're as safe as possible, keep businesses running, the city running, and keep our schools running and our kids in school. All right, City Manager, do you have anything?
No report.
No report. All right, with that, moving on to Agenda Item O, Executive Session.